Members, good evening and welcome to tonight's boardwork session on the development of the 2020 bond. This meeting is being audio streamed live on channel 28 and will be replayed throughout the next two weeks. Please check the district website for replay times. This meeting is also being streamed live on our PPS TV services website, audio only. This November, voters may be asked to consider a 2020 school bond renewal that would maintain the current tax rate and continue our investments in our schools. The PPS Board of Education has proposed three options for a 2020 bond renewal at the current tax rate. And for the past several weeks, we have received input from the community through surveys, focus groups, polling, and a virtual town hall. Prior to our discussion tonight, we will begin with public comment. Roseanne, I'm missing my... Excuse me, let me review our, some of our guidelines for public comment. And if any of those who are present to provide testimony, if you have additional materials you'd like to give the board or the superintendent, please email them to publiccomment@pps.net. If you're watching this board meeting via the live stream while waiting, please make sure that you mute prior to your turn to speak. If you leave it on, it creates feedback and you'll be muted by the meeting administrator and we will come back to you. Please make sure when you begin your comments that you clearly state your name and spell your last name. You'll have two minutes to speak. You will hear a sound when it's time to conclude your remarks. We appreciate your input very much and thank you for your cooperation. Ms. Bradshaw, do we have anyone signed up for public comment tonight?
Yes, we do. Sorry, just got, we have Winter Johannes.
Welcome. Do we see Ms. Johannes on?
I do, it looks like she's unmuted.
Yes, good evening, everyone, can you hear me?
We can, welcome.
Thank you. So, good evening, Portland Public Schools Board and everyone tuning in. Thank you for the opportunity to provide a few brief comments tonight. For the record, my name is Winter Johannes. I serve as the Managing Director of the Albino Vision Trust. So, as many of you know, we're putting forth a concept for the Center for Black Excellence, which we hope will be integrated into your consideration of a potential bond measure. We've given the presentation before, so I won't go into the details, but we'll say briefly tonight that embedded in the work of Albino Vision is the idea that the built environment is never neutral. And so, in a nation grappling so deeply with its legacy, with the legacy of its founding, it's no surprise then that the built environment is actually very often harmful. But we believe that Albino Vision, it doesn't have to be that way, that we can design the built environment to transform the reality and design neighborhoods, environments, and cities that not only reflect the needs and aspirations of all its people, but that also reflects a love for black people. We cannot do this work alone and we know that Portland Public Schools is a part of our love story. And so, in this period of really accelerated social change, this time has been so emotional and heavy for us. It's also been electrifying at times and so we've been so energized by the conversations we've been having with all of you and the opportunity to look at this moment and say, this is when we decided that we were not going to make a difference, but we were going to make the difference, that we were going to look at the whole life of children in this city and especially black kids and consider how all of our investments can be coordinated, not as separate initiatives, not as separate jurisdictions, but as a whole investment because we love the black kids in the city and we want them to look back at this time and know that we were considering their whole life, their whole personhood, which includes their families and the communities and the cities they belong to. So, thank you for the opportunity to offer just a few brief comments. I look forward to continuing to work with all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Callie Lad.
Welcome.
Hello. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So, I, for the record, good evening, board members. For the record, my name is Callie Thorn Lad and I'm here also to speak about what Albina Trust has presented. Kairos has been a partner in that work. I'm reminded of this time, I, some of you may have watched the musical Hamilton over the weekend I did with my children. And there is a theme throughout the musical where they talk about history has its eyes on you and the idea that the world is upside down and we have an opportunity to write a new narrative. I believe that is the time we're in now as well and that all of us have an opportunity to write a new narrative and that I think history will have its eyes on us and what happens and what we do in this space right now will be something that our children and our grandchildren will read about and hear about. And so, I just want to also emphasize my support for centering black excellence as we think about this school bond. I know that all of you believe in the ability of black children to thrive and now we have an opportunity to center decision-making around the built environment as well as I would say programming and curriculum to ensure that black children thrive and not just thrive academically, but socially, emotionally, and culturally. And so, I'm very excited that this conversation is at the forefront, that all of you have an opportunity to write this narrative in history. Kairos, SEI, POIC, Albina Head Start, many organizations are at the ready to serve the children in this community and to work with the district and partner with the district to ensure that our children do thrive. And so, I encourage you to make this decision and know that the community will be behind you, alongside you, to ensure that we can be successful. I think that this is an opportunity for this to be a light, not just for the state of Oregon, but maybe the nation. We need to see this work and we need to see it be successful. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you so much for joining us.
That concludes who we have signed up.
Okay, thank you so much. Superintendent Guerrero, would you like to introduce our topic for this evening?
Yes, thank you, Chair Constan, really appreciate tonight's public comments. As you mentioned, for the last several weeks, we've all been engaging with the unity to gather feedback and input on proposed bonds and renewal scenarios. So, tonight, we're gonna share with you all poll results, data from our survey that went out to staff and families, consolidated feedback from targeted focus groups, and feedback on what we heard during our June 25 virtual town hall. So, the goal this evening is for the board to continue having the opportunity to iterate and further zero in on a favored option to refer to voters on July 28. So, taking the lead for staff this evening, Ms. Courtney Westling, our Director of Government Relations, she's gonna get us started.
Hello, everybody, good evening. Can you hear me?
Good evening, we can.
I always like to check because this is all new, right? What we're always doing is from our bedrooms or basements. So, I'm gonna actually start by kicking it over to Luke Martin with ALG Research to go through the polling results that we are, that we just became aware of. And so, he's gonna go through a slide deck and Roseanne's gonna share the slides and then Luke will let Roseanne know when he wants to move on to the next slide.
Sounds great, thanks Courtney. Are we sharing the slides yet? There we go, perfect. Yeah, Roseanne, I don't know if you can go to the slideshow and full screen it just so people can see a little easier. Okay, thanks Courtney, again, my name is Luke Martin, I'm a Senior Associate with ALG Research. I am currently actually just a few miles north of the other Portland over here in Maine, but still love Portland, Oregon nonetheless. So, as Courtney said, you know, we've been doing some research and have done research in the past with Portland Public Schools. You know, we did some research back in December when the sort of early conversations about the bond were starting to happen and we were asked to sort of come back in and reassess what the environment looks like now. Obviously, a lot has changed since December, but you know, still sort of an interesting contrast point to look back to, you know, with this fresh data. If you want to go to the next slide. So, just to give a brief overview of what we did here, we did a 600 sample phone survey of likely voters here in Portland, Oregon. The data is very fresh, you know, we went in the field June 29 and finished on July 6. So, took a little break there in the 4th of July, 4th of July weekend. But you know, we've just, you know, just started going through the data and you know, just kind of wrapped up our analysis. So, these are very fresh numbers. Overall, 67% of interviews conducted via phone, via cell phones, excuse me, and the margin of error for a sample of this size is 4%. You can actually skip like two slides ahead. Skip over these subtitle slides. So, again, you know, part of the goal with this poll was really to evaluate the impact coronavirus has had and how it would affect support for the bond. So, you know, to start doing that, you know, one of the things we did was really ask, you know, as the crisis continues, you know, do you expect your family's financial situation will get better, stay the same, or get worse? And what we found in Portland is that, you know, about 1 in 3 voters do expect their financial situation will get worse. Conversely, about 2 in 3 think that it'll at least stay the same, a very small percent thinks that it'll actually get better. In general, you know, these tend to be, you know, people under 50, younger people that think their financial situation will get worse, non-college grads and renters. These are groups that typically support bond measures at a higher threshold. So, you know, one of the things we were initially very interested in this data with was, you know, seeing how this specifically would kind of affect their support. So, I mean, the good thing is right away that I'll just kind of, you know, like, you know, I won't bury the lead here is, you know, we do see most of these groups, you know, because they typically, you know, support bonds at such a high level, they pretty much keep their support, you know, basically where we would expect to normally see them. So, we're not really seeing, you know, an artificially depressed amount of support for the bond because of how COVID is affecting their finances. So, initially right off the bat, I think that's a very good sign for things here. You can skip to the next slide. So, the next sort of metric we tracked and, you know, we've asked this every time, we have seen like a very slight decrease in the overall education quality or the perception of overall education quality among voters, but still doing very well here. I mean, you know, typically, this is a pretty harsh metric for schools. Everything has, everybody has, you know, something bad to say unfortunately, as I'm sure you all know. But you know, we're getting basically even reading, or an even rating here from voters. The one sort of stark difference there is people with children giving negative rating while those that have no children, you know, giving a positive rating, but really, you know, it's more that they just don't know. There's a couple of things about this. You know, conversely, you know, what are the other metrics we looked to? Was we also asked this question as a split, so half the sample heard the overall education quality, half the sample heard, you know, basically, you know, how would you rate the quality of education provided by Portland Public Schools during the coronavirus pandemic? So, the good news here is that, you know, while those with children are giving a negative rating overall, they're actually giving a positive rating when it comes to how PPS has responded during coronavirus. So, I think that's a really good opportunity and then you'll see that sort of don't know, you know, the percentage of people without children who aren't able to give any rating at all, you know, really kind of doubling compared to the overall rating. So, I think there's really an opportunity here to, you know, educate and reinforce voters, you know, with the job that PPS has done. And I think this all kind of plays into, you know, what the narrative with the bond, you know, essentially will end up being. And you can go to the next slide. The other sort of key metric that we normally track in these instances is the satisfaction with how Portland Public Schools spends the tax dollars it receives. The very good news here is that this number has stayed very stable. So, we went from a plus 6 rating in December of 2019, so 44% sort of saying they were satisfied with the rating and again, a plus 6 rating in our current data. We haven't lost any support really, you know, the number has gone down 3 points, but really, you know, what's happening here is that the number of people who basically can't give a rating has essentially gone up. So, still sort of maintaining the same net rating here. So, again, a very sort of good early indication in this data. We do also, I will note, receive net positive ratings from some sort of groups that normally skew more tax sensitive, so that normally are sort of, you know, more prone to be less supportive of these kind of bond measures. So, most of those subgroups giving a net positive rating here as well. And you can skip ahead 2 slides. So, getting into the bond support, you know, again, this is the sort of, one of many pieces of good news in here. So, we asked, you know, basically a general support question. You know, this is how, you know, the ballot language might actually appear in the ballot because there is no rate increase. But basically asking, shall Portland Public Schools repair, modernize, replace technology, and update curriculum by issuing bonds estimated to maintain the current tax rate? When we asked that, you know, we easily sort of clear the viability threshold that we normally look for. So, normally in, you know, yes campaigns or, you know, sort of funding campaigns, we look for a sort of minimum viability threshold of 60% overall support with strong support somewhere in the mid to high 30s. So, sort of easily clearing both those metrics here, 40% strong support, 66 overall support. And you're really sort of muted opposition, that's the other thing, really good signal here. You know, if this came back and, you know, opposition was somewhere in like the mid to high 30s, you know, I think this would be a little less optimistic, but you know, only really getting 22% of voters overall, expressing any real opposition to the bond. You can go to the next slide. And for some reason, these are blacked out here, but these numbers do, the boxes there do sort of line up. I think everybody can kind of figure out what's going on there. So, getting into the different funding levels, again, we did sort of test 3 different options here. And you know, initially, what you see obviously is that a majority of voters strongly favor, actually not even just favor, but strongly favor the $1.1 billion bond proposal. So, very good news there. We actually see an increase in support from the general ballot question. So, going from 66 overall support to 75% overall support. And I think, you know, that's a really good sort of indication that there's very little sticker shock, you know, as we clear that $1 billion threshold. And just sort of give a kind of a brief overview of how this question worked. So, every respondent heard the funding amounts in order of highest to lowest. And this is really done to sort of replicate the reality of this conversation. And it's usually done that way to sort of find where the floor of support here is. The interesting here is basically without any sort of increase in the tax rate, we actually find decreased support for the smaller bond amounts that do less. I will say, you know, obviously, you know, in writing this poll and analyzing this data, you know, we're all cognizant of the fact that, you know, Portland Public Schools was, you know, pretty public with their earlier bond conversations about the $1.4 billion bond. I think it's also probably likely that there's some criticism that these smaller bond amounts don't do more and that's probably likely reflected in the, in the lack of support for their smaller bond amount. And you can skip ahead 2 slides. So, getting into the individual priorities for this bond. You know, the top priorities here and really, I think what this, what the theme of this data says to me is that, you know, what voters are really interested in is increasing education opportunity. Here, you know, that is through, you know, updated, modern, current curriculum, you know, which is getting, you know, sort of the most intensity behind the support for that priority. So, 29% that, you know, one of the most important priorities. 74% overall saying it's at least a very important priority. Making sure with students with disabilities have the same access as their peers. So, 28% saying, you know, one of the most important, 73% overall. In that, you know, again, this one sort of always tests fairly highly, but you know, remains a very important priority here. You know, that critical maintenance projects don't really become a hindrance to students' education and that means, you know, obviously, you know, fixing leaky and steering roofs, replacing outdated and failing heating and cooling systems. So, that one getting 25%, you know, intensity and then 72% overall support. And you can skip to the next slide. So, you know, as we get into sort of the next tier of priorities here, you know, I will say, you know, all of these, with the exception of one, which you'll see in the next slide, you know, receiving very high levels of support generally. You know, typically, anything kind of above 50% is, you know, where we kind of draw the line is like, you know, this isn't probably something that's gonna motivate people. But you know, really here, you know, voters were pretty widespread with, you know, what they were willing to support. So, again, I think that, you know, that as a whole is a good indication, but it also means sort of, you know, the things that we're able to talk about, you know, the things that we're able to highlight that this money will do. You know, we have a lot of options there, which makes things, you know, just sort of easier in general. So, all of these ones, you know, as sort of next tier, you know, rating very highly, including accountability. You know, the modernization of Jefferson, you know, especially with an emphasis on that, the Center for Black Student Excellence. You know, that rated higher than, you know, another question which we split tested, which was about the modernization of Jefferson, but you know, was more focused on, you know, the actual, you know, age of the building itself. So, you know, that diversity component, you know, the equity component of that and the Center of Black Student Excellence, you know, really, you know, driving higher support generally, which was great to see. So, that one getting 21% saying, you know, one of the most important and then 62% overall. And then finally, the last one on here is, you know, increased technology access. You know, again, something especially in light of coronavirus, you know, I found very important in a number of these school funding scenarios. So, all sort of these top 6, you know, all rated very highly, you know, all very important motivators. You know, I think all sort of safe ground for us to talk about and, you know, really kind of promote this part of this package. And you can go to the next slide. So, finally, you know, here we've got seismic upgrades, you know, improvements to special education. And then again, the other sort of split test of that Jefferson question, which dealt more with the sort of condition of the school rather than the diversity component. I mean, you know, all of those still, you know, again, you know, being rated very highly above 50%. And you'll see that second Jefferson question too, you know, giving a fairly high percent of, you know, intensity there, so 23%. Still saying, you know, addressing, you know, the condition of Jefferson is, you know, one of the most important things. The last thing on here, you know, strengthening school security. You know, the way this question is set up, you know, it's not really an indication that this is something that's bad or is gonna turn off voters or, you know, kind of like actively work against us. It's more just an indication that it's not something that people are motivated by. So, not that it's off the table, but again, you know, not gonna be something that people are gonna see and be sort of actively enthusiastic about. And you can go to the next slide. So, we did test some positive messaging in this poll. So, we tested 3 messages overall. You know, again, really kind of great to see here, but basically all of them, you know, testing above 40% total, very convincing. That is sort of the key marker we looked for on communications. So, basically, anything above 40% very convincing. You know, we typically consider that a good message or a motivating message. Anything below that is something that, you know, isn't likely to sort of motivate voters. But all 3 messages here, you know, really, you know, pretty well above that mark. The equity message we tested, you know, received sort of the most support or resonated the most among these voters. But you know, health and safety repairs, technology updates, you know, both testing well in the mid 40s. And you'll see the soft voters category on here as well. So, that is anybody in the initial sort of general support question who was either undecided or was just somewhat in favor or opposed. So, these are people that haven't totally made up their minds yet. 2 good things here, you know, the soft voters, you know, really kind of responding similarly to voters overall. You know, indicating, you know, similar levels of enthusiasm for these messages. The other good thing is, you know, a lot of times what we'll see with these soft voters is sometimes these messages will actively, you know, sort of turn them off essentially. So, you'll see very low levels of people reporting a message that's very convincing just because they're sort of not interested in the conversation. That is not something we're seeing here with any of these messages. So, again, all very good indication. And you can go to the next slide. So, you know, after hearing more about the bond and, you know, at this point, you know, they've heard the 3 different funding levels and the sort of different components that are hurt, that are part of those funding levels. You know, they've heard about the different priorities that could be included in the bond and they've heard that positive messaging. So, what we see is actually an increase in support, which is always good, but there's some sort of subtlety in this support increase that I think is important to notice. The first good thing that you'll notice is that we actually see a decrease in opposition. So, a lot of times in these funding, you know, ballot questions, what you'll see here is, you know, essentially, a lot of don't know vote basically being converted to support. But you'll also see some of that don't know vote, you know, as people learn more, you know, going to the opposition essentially. So, here we actually see the opposite. We see basically both undecided voters and opposition voters, you know, increasing and going to support once they learn more about the bond. So, I think that's a really good indication, you know, indicates some pliability in the opposition vote especially, which I think is kind of a key here. You know, I think if you saw, you know, that opposition vote really firm up, you know, that would sort of tell me that, you know, there was a little more, you know, opposition kind of brewing or had the ability to, you know, the opposition had the ability to grow a little bit more. You know, we're here, we're just seeing it really weakening. And you know, I think a lot of that probably goes to the fact that, you know, we're not talking about a rate increase. So, there's not much for sort of opposition voters to latch on to in this. So, again, really great, great signs here. You know, just very positive overall in general. And you can skip ahead 2 slides. So, I think I kind of covered most of this here, but you know, just to reiterate, you know, the sort of, you know, the fine points. So, you know, essentially, what we found in this data is, you know, 2 in 3 Portland voters, you know, support a new bond. You know, just general support, while 3 in 4 actually support a $1.1 billion package. So, you know, that specific funding amount, you know, where they can learn within it. And you know, that includes a realized community vision at the Jefferson High School campus for the Center of Black Student Excellence. Expanding educational opportunity, I think is kind of the, you know, the narrative for the top priority for voters here. You know, really what that means is, you know, increased equity, you know, health and safety and technology. You know, I think essentially the route that that kind of takes is, you know, it starts with the modernization of Jefferson High School. That's kind of like the focal point, but you know, it really applies district-wide. And I think it's important to emphasize, you know, like the, you know, the benefits district-wide of, you know, increasing opportunity, you know, through things like, you know, a modern curriculum and increased accessibility. And I think, you know, just again, to sort of reiterate and, you know, put a, put an exclamation point, you know, I think it's a really good sign that we're able to demonstrate the positive movement throughout this poll. You know, that is not always the case. You know, as voters really do learn more about the specific components of the bond and hear positive messaging. You know, we see a good consolidation among, you know, people that are already existing. You know, so we're seeing, you know, higher numbers of support from groups that are already supporters. And then, you know, positive movement from groups that are undecided or in this case, again, even oppose. So, all very good indications. So, that is all I've got for you. I think there's actually one more slide here that I'll kind of leave up, that's just the vote summary. And this just is again, you know, kind of a quick summary of, you know, the current vote to the general vote, that informed vote, which was the, you know, the last one I showed. And then the one all the way on the right is the $1.1 billion bond vote. So, I figured that would be kind of handy to leave up while we take questions.
Yeah, so we're gonna open the floor for questions because it's late where Luke is and we want to make sure he can sign off at some point. So, take it away, whoever wants to ask a question of Luke while he's with us.
So, this is Director Bren Edwards, thanks for the presentation, as somebody who's been involved in a lot of campaigns, it's very heartening to see when a package that I think is a real win for the community, also, and does the things that we really think need to set us up for the future, also does really well with voters, so it's heartening to see. My question is around just the environment over the next four months, obviously, it's summertime, there's a lot of volatility given the pandemic and the economic recession, and also our national reckoning with racial inequality and social justice, and my question would be sort of, and I know this is, we've never sort of been in this exact environment in which you have this external environment that is fairly unpredictable in the sense of this coming fall, just, so you're thinking about the, whether we would see a change in attitudes or perceptions based on, you know, what happens this fall, and sort of, you know, how solid you think the base numbers are, or looking at the price tabs?
Yeah.
It's a hard question, I'm just, it's, we're a long way, the numbers look great, and I say, I think it's a thing that they match, I think it's a strong package, and voters recognize that.
Well, I mean, I guess, you know, my, the easy answer there as a pollster is, you know, the way to figure that out is to do more research, which, you know, we're always happy to do for you guys, but I think there are a couple of good indications in this data that there is at least some resiliency in this, you know, again, we are seeing very high sort of levels of firmness and support, so even in that general bond question, you know, 40% for, you know, strong support in the initial ask about the $1.1 billion bond, you know, 50%, you know, so a majority of voters already saying, you know, they're strongly in favor of that. And again, you know, I guess I would go back to that sort of education quality question, it really stuck out to me that, you know, while those with children, you know, would give a negative overall rating, which, you know, is fairly common, especially with school districts, it really struck me that, you know, they would give a negative rating overall, but then also give a positive rating for, you know, how the district has handled everything during coronavirus. So, I mean, I think there, you know, there's, you kind of see the opportunity there, you know, especially even among those who don't have children, you know, to really sort of reinforce and, you know, drive that, you know, that rating up, I think, you know, kind of as that COVID rating increases, you know, if we can keep that high and, you know, keep informing voters of the job Portland Public Schools is doing, you know, I think, you know, the more you can do that, you know, the more you can kind of build resilience into the support here.
Great, thanks.
This is Director Bailey, I want to thank you for a nice, clear explanation, and I always love bar graphs. So I just want to say, one, this is maybe the most positive poll I've seen in my history of PBS, and particularly around this bond, this, there's nothing we have to downplay, there's every good reason, you know, we have for going out for a bond, find support in these results, so that's, that's a real great way to build a campaign. And just another issue that may, that we can build into our campaign message is, this is a jobs bond, and if the economy is still in pretty tough shape in November, which none of us would be surprised by that, this is a way to put dollars to work, to put people back to work, as just one of the side benefits. So I'm, I'm real happy that we can build a campaign around doing good things for kids, around addressing issues of social justice and racial equity, this is great.
Yeah, and I mean, you know, one thing I'll say real quick about that too is, you know, done a couple, you know, school funding, you know, yes campaigns recently, and I do think, you know, in general, you know, done one in the Midwest and done one on the East Coast as well, you know, I think we've seen, you know, if anything, kind of a support for more education funding, I think everybody, you know, in this environment is kind of looking for some way to give back, and I do think there's some degree to which voters kind of see this as their way to kind of contribute and make things a little bit better for everybody in this environment. So that's kind of my, like, mushy take on a little bit of this, but, you know, one I think is still kind of relevant.
Um, Luke, I want to thank you for your presentation too, you know, we got a briefing on the numbers, but it's one thing to hear the numbers and another thing to see them like this, those 602 likely voters spoke for the larger community, and I think what this is, is a great example of democracy at work, we've had people out marching in the streets, not just recently, but for decades, and it's, this is a great example of, you know, the district leading on listening to those voices and operationalizing equity in a way that I don't think I've seen demonstrated in my lifetime, so this is very exciting, happy to move forward.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think you get these numbers without, you know, the work the district has done, I think that kind of goes with that thing.
Thank you, do we have any other questions about the poll? This is Director Bren Edwards again, I don't know if you want to speak to any of these sort of elements, other than the modernizations and the testing and sort of what you see maybe beneath the numbers, whether it's related to the health and safety portion or the technology pieces, curriculum, it looks like, from my perspective, that we have a whole host of elements to the bond that strongly resonate with our community, but I'm just curious about your thinking about the different components that might be part of the package.
Sure, yes, I mean, I guess the first thing, you know, I think with a priority specifically, you know, we've obviously taken a pretty thorough look through the cross tabs here, you know, parents, you know, those who have children in public schools, you know, really, you know, emphasize the priority of the curriculum, you know, we found a much higher degree to which, you know, they reported sort of higher intensity for that one specifically, we've also taken a lot of look through this data for people of color as well, you know, they really, it's interesting, you know, they reported somewhat higher levels of, you know, being financially affected by coronavirus initially, and their support initially is somewhat lower overall, but, you know, they really demonstrated the most ability of any subject to move throughout this data, and they really seem to key in especially on those equity messages, so I think those are kind of both really good signals, at least at first, you know, happy to sort of elaborate on that more too as we continue to dig through this.
Great, thanks.
One last comment is, I think this is an opportunity to link some kind of unsexy things like HVAC to COVID in terms of improving airflow in our buildings besides, you know, preventing systems from failing, and I think there's a number of opportunities in here to link the bond to responding to the pandemic.
I think that HVAC systems, you always say they're not sexy, but they actually are, particularly in a pandemic environment where, you know, the rate of air exchange is going to become increasingly important, you know, depending on how many kids are in buildings.
Well, it's, it's a special small subset of us that...
HVAC grooming right along.
Luke, Luke, thank you very much for joining us and for your work, it's great to get those insights from the community, and it's also just great to get the really, really positive, positive look at voters' perceptions, and I think it is partly a reflection of being able to see the investments that have already been made in this community and how much more we have to do. So without any further questions on the polling, I will send it back to Courtney.
Great, thanks again, Luke, have a great night.
Thanks.
So Roseanne, would you present the next slideshow? Great, thank you, among your many talents. Okay, so I am going to, let's see, I'm getting some feedback, are you guys hearing feedback? Okay, then I'll just ignore it. Roseanne, can you go to the next slide? Okay, so where we are now, we went through the poll, we're going to have Dr. Brown talk about the survey result, and then we're going to turn it over to Jonathan to walk us through the town hall, the virtual town hall, and then I believe he's going to kick it to Shanice to talk about the focus group. So I am going to have Roseanne click to the next slide, and I'm going to ask Dr. Brown to join us to talk about the survey.
Good evening, can you all hear me?
You can, welcome.
Thank you, pleasure to be with you this evening, thank you for the opportunity to present, I think you're going to hear a very similar message, we had a survey that we put out to the community between June 23rd and July 3rd, so similar window of time, we had 2,058 respondents, of those about 80% were white, the vast majority of the respondents were Portland residents, about 70% of the respondents were parents in the system, and we had about 17.3% of our educators that participated in the survey as well. Next slide please. We had a couple blocks of questions that ask about investment priorities and ask folks to look at certain dimensions, you know, curriculum, technology, special education classrooms, additional instructional investment, and rate them in terms of either being extremely valuable, all the way to not valuable at all, and you can see that, much like in the polling, curriculum and technology and special education classrooms all were considered to be, you know, quite valuable or extremely valuable by, you know, 75% plus of our community, and additional instructional investments, a little bit more ambiguous, had only 64%. Again, curriculum was most valued category of the lot, but technology was a close second, and again, you see the special ed classroom is not very far behind on that as well. We also ask, next slide please, about health and safety investment priorities, and much like we heard before, in general, the respondents did not see as much compelling value in security systems as they did in the others, the other items all clustered pretty closely, you know, in the high 70s to low 80s, looking at roofs, ADA accessibility, seismic improvements in mechanical systems, all were considered relatively valuable by the respondents to the survey. Next slide please. Next slide please. There were a couple of open-ended questions as well, one asked about, you know, modernization, and again, was it open-ended question, you see the word cloud there, and at the center of that word cloud, you see Jefferson, and we looked through the responses to the open-ended questions and pulled out a couple exemplars, the one that you see here is typical, Jefferson modernization should absolutely be prioritized as the historically black high school in PPS and in the state of Oregon, and the home of Indian education program, PPS needs to stand by their mission to prioritize black and Native American students, families and staff. We also asked open-ended question in terms of the bond proposal, you know, what else should the board be considering as they think about the bond proposal, and again, you see Jefferson at the center of that, and a rather pointed comment, PPS loves to put black students from Jefferson in their slideshows and websites, but will not prioritize modernization, saying the word equity and prioritizing black and Native American students and actually doing something that benefits black and Native American communities are very different things, stop talking and do. That being said, when we ask the community and the respondents to tell us, of the bond priorities, which one do you favor, not surprisingly, and again, very similar to what we heard from the polling, the $1 billion bond proposal that had a very clear pathway forward for Jefferson was preferred by the largest group of the respondents, with 38.6% of the respondents favoring it. So I think what you hear in this data is something very similar to what you heard from the polling data, the two, I think, give a very similar picture of the interest in the community to move forward and to support Jefferson as we move forward. With that, that sort of covers the content from the survey, and I'll be handing off to Jonathan Garcia now.
Thank you, Dr. Brown, next slide please, so a few weeks ago, as you recall, you hosted a town hall, and we wanted to provide you, again, very similar messaging from the poll and from the survey that we heard from folks that attended our session. Overall, as we had about 167 RSVPs, we probably had close to 100, 120 folks show up, as you recall, we had structured the town hall into breakout rooms, and so we had different conversations, you should have received an email from Director Westling, a summary or overview of these key takeaways, but wanted to highlight that, again, similar, you know, there's general support for investments in educational infrastructures with a strong desire for additional special classrooms, obviously increasing our efforts in health and safety, and similarly to the two other speakers before me, Jefferson continues to be an area that the community really has articulated as an area for us to invest, and so collectively, you know, in all rooms, especially in the room around bond options, you know, modernizing and providing the full funding for Jefferson was a priority, and then during these conversations, as you all know, Board, the Center for Black Excellence emerged as an idea that the school board should consider including in the bond video, so those were some of the key takeaways from the town hall. Now I'm going to turn it over to our Director of Meeting, Shanice Clark, to share a few thoughts on our focus groups that we just concluded yesterday.
Greetings, Superintendent, Chair, Councilmen, Directors, if we move on to the next slide, I can talk a little bit about our focus groups in which many of you were able to participate in, but we wanted to continue this effort of focusing opportunities for our black and native and other families of color to specifically voice their priorities when we're reflecting on this bond package, and we were able to work in relationship with our racial equity and social justice department to think through what small groups of students and families would look like in, over the course of this week, and so you'll see here some highlights that are also reflected in that larger overview that you've received, that our student council, NEA, Self-Enhancement Incorporated, Latino Network, Open School and the Coalition of Black Men were able to work with us as thought partners as we got feedback from them, our students and families, so I'd like to talk more about that if we move to the next slide. So across all of our focus groups, we definitely heard similar themes that are in alignment with what has been raised already tonight, but we absolutely especially... But we absolutely, especially during a time of coronavirus and distance learning, had a lot of reflection across all of our focus groups, our black and Native focus groups and Spanish-speaking focus groups of the heightened priority of educational investments and what that means for them as this essential tool in their day-to-day lives. And the second theme that is definitely a priority is calling out the third bond option as it's, you know, it's closely represents this opportunity to comprehensively fund Jefferson. And lots of discussion around what this investment, this overdue investment in those students at this historically black school would really mean, in addition to the Center for Black Excellence and really hearing enthusiastic support and folks really feeling affirmed and relieved almost that this is a discussion that will really be coming to life. So I think those are themes, two themes, but across the four focus groups, you'll see some more details in that overview. And I'll pass it on.
Thanks, Shanice.
So I'll just, yeah, I'm just going to wrap up and tell you that that concludes the presentation. And we wanted to leave quite a bit of time for board discussion, so I think now is that time. And we have, I know that, you know, with these kinds of things, we can talk all night, but we have a good hour and six minutes.
I'd just like to say, with regard to the engagement, I think at the beginning of this pandemic, it seemed so hard for us to wrap our heads around how we were going to be able to communicate with our community in this time. And it's so critically important for this task at hand, building this bond package, that we really hear from people. And I just want to commend you, Shanice and Jonathan and your whole team for really figuring out new ways to bring in lots of different viewpoints. And in a pretty meaningful way, you know, not just, not just wrote or answer a few questions. The focus group conversations were really deep and meaningful. And thank you, Dr. Brown, for your team's work on the survey, which is really important because it reaches a broader cross-section of people. So I just want to say thank you. It's so important for us to have this information available. And just like everything else, had to figure out a new way to do it. Any other discussion around just what we've learned from these different means of engaging with the public?
I just want to. I wanted to thank Shanice. I was involved in a couple of your focus groups and Jonathan, your work in reaching people that we don't engage with well sometimes was really impactful. You know, the conversations that I've had with different community leaders over the last 10 days or two weeks have followed that same bell curve that we're hearing from the larger community in wanting to see investment in black students. And I just, I'm feeling very positive about the way that we've gone around this product. And we have so much evidence now and direction for which way to go with this. I think it's fantastic, but particularly your work in working with these focus groups has been really great, high quality.
Much appreciation, Directors. And as our teams are building these systems, I know in relationship with our systems, planning and performance will start to really carve out a strategy that will be defined that we can continue. And I think bringing these voices and thinking about our targeted universalism philosophy through engagement is something that definitely during a time of an uprising, but for our students in the context of what they deserve, I think, makes a lot of sense and is getting positive feedback from our black and Native folks that we're continuing these feedback loops. And so, yes, it's a lot of work, but I appreciate you all for investing in it and being present.
So one comment I wanted to have is around the high school modernizations. And I think I appreciate that we had an opportunity here in a variety of different forums, students really speaking from the heart and especially students and staff about what an improvement in the learning environment would mean to them and what it would mean to the message that it would send from the community that they are valued. And I say, we heard this especially from the Jefferson students and staff, that the current condition of the facility really sends a negative message about their value and the value of their education. And that, they said it in a way, though, that was hopeful, that things were about ready to change. So I really appreciate the way that the feedback sessions were set up so that we could hear that here directly from students. And I appreciate that they were direct and honest in their assessment of where we are and where we need to go. I also, and this comment came out in the survey and also emails we got, I want to just say to the Cleveland and Wilson community that, you know, we reached a point in time and where one high school needed to go before the other. And I think two critical things happened, that Cleveland and Wilson communities said that, yes, Jefferson needed to go first. And so, you know, thank you to those communities for recognizing the right thing to do. But also, I want to shout out to the facility's staff and OSM for also coming up with the way in which we could also communicate with the Cleveland and Wilson communities that we still are prioritizing the modernization of their high schools. And that's going to happen and that they're potentially, if we go with option number three, we'll be making a tangible investment in those communities. So just really all around a good process that got us, I think, through a challenging potentially issue to, I think, a good outcome. And so thank the team staff who helped get us to that point.
Thank you, Julie. I think that's a good segue. So to move our conversation on to looking at the options before us and looking at how option three has evolved. And as we all know, this decision about defining pretty specifically what's going to be in this package and referring it to the voters is bearing down on us before the end of this month. So I'm guessing that this next starring role goes to Dan Young. Is that correct? Do we have a, do we have a option slide to put forward?
So you all have a discussion draft, and if that's what you'd like him to talk through, that would be the better way to do it.
You mean just from our email?
We don't have a final option to present since you guys are going to discuss where you want to go next. So the document that was shared before the meeting has a draft of a, of a option, option three plus, basically, based on what the feedback that came out of the community engagement.
Okay, so you're just referring to our email, not anything you're going to put forward?
Right, yep.
Yeah, okay.
I'm sorry, is that the, the email we got at 5:53?
Yes, yes, it is.
Okay.
And I'm sorry that it was so late.
No, that's okay. I just wanted to make sure you're looking at the right thing.
Yeah, yeah, so it's, the title of the document is "Draft for Board Discussion", and that got line items that you've seen before. And I know we talked about posting it, so Roseanne knows that that's in the hopper. I'm not sure if it's been posted, but that's what we are working off for this next part of the discussion. And again, sorry that this came late. This is a fast process, guys.
Courtney, is it possible for you to share that as a slide?
Yeah.
Bond renewal option at 1.1 billion?
Also, is it possible for someone on staff to post it with our media materials if it hasn't already been posted?
Yeah, I'm not sure if I know how to share on WebEx. So I'm going to ask Roseanne, who has the document, if she could, if she could share it. And I'm sorry for the.
The answer is yes to both.
Great.
Yeah, I'll get them.
And really, for the purposes of discussion, this, there are no changes to this proposed bond renewal option from our previous option three other than a line item for the Center for Black Student Excellence Planning, Design, and Preconstruction. Is that correct, Courtney? Nothing else is?
The only, the only other change was based on feedback from you all to increase the sped classroom number to see what that total was. So the sped classroom number on this option draft is the larger number from the two earlier, the two other options. So in option one and two from before, sped classrooms were at 22.3. And in option three from before, it was 4.5. There was an interest from the board to go bigger, and so that's what's reflected here. So that's the only other change.
Got it. Thank you very much.
So.
Apologies, I'm pulling it up.
Can somebody talk me through the $60 million of design dollars for the Center for Black Excellence? That's 50% more than designing for two high schools. So.
Dan, do you want to start, and then I can weigh in here?
Sure, yeah. Sure, I mean, I'll just, I'll mention quickly, I think, so the $60 million, I think what that, what that looks to represent is a significant investment in the Center for Black Student Excellence. And that will go towards, as noted there, planning and design of what that future project and scope looks like. A lot of that is, will need to be defined through that planning process. But the intention is to show a significant investment. Jonathan, I'll let you fill in.
Yes, I think that's right. So I would add that from a line item perspective, we're looking at, you know, some of the work around your concept or conceptual planning, as Dan suggested. It also will include, as we know, this is going to be atypical from the typical experiences we have around modernizing our schools and our school communities. And so engagement with the black community will be very central in identifying key ways to do that. So there'll be some investment for meaningful engagement around how do we build out the goals and the objectives of the Center for Black Student Excellence. And then, and then as we think about, you know, this work, we want to show a commitment that we're not only doing conceptual planning, but that we're actually also beginning to design some of that work, right? Because as we, what has been clear, you know, from our community and feedback is that, you know, we, just like many institutions in Oregon and across the country, plan a lot of things, but then put those on the shelf. So we want to show that in this bond, we're committed to both the conceptual planning, meaningful engagement of our community, of our black community, our community in the Jefferson cluster, and then some actual meat behind that, you know, with architectural design.
Jonathan, just to cut you off, sorry, Amy, but I think, I think to both Jonathan and Dan, I think the $60 million, it says planning, design, preconstruction. I think that also includes some construction. So there's capital costs involved in there. And so I think we should, we should make sure we're really clear on this and also with the public that it's, it's not just planning, design, and preconstruction. There's actually funding in there that would be involved for actual capital costs. And, you know, Scott, back to your question, I think in terms of what, I think this is the exact point. We are not saying exactly what that $60 million is going to go for because one of the most important parts of this process is co-creation with the community. And, and I think that this is, this is, you know, you all heard me raise a few weeks ago some concerns about, do we know what the vision is? Have we talked to the community? Have we heard from them? I will tell you what I heard loud and clear over the last few weeks from the community is the need to move forward and the need not to wait, but also the need to continue to engage. And so to be really clear, we know the $320 million is for, is, you know, it's a rough estimate, but it's a pretty good estimate of what we think it's going to do, cost to modernize Jefferson. The $60 million is less defined intentionally because we're going to be talking to the community about exactly what that Center for Black Student Excellence will look like, going through all of that planning and design, and then actually having some money for construction as well.
Director Scott, and if I can, if I can just add, I think what's important is that we, as we think about the Center for Black Student Excellence, let's remember that we, you know, part of the vision or the guide is that, that we are going to be talking, you know, pre-K to 12. So that includes potentially multiple sites, that includes multiple opportunities to think about the black community and the schools that represent the black community, like Boise Elliott as an example. What does that look like to think about some support there? So.
Multiple sites is a really critical point here. And also, back to your point, Andrew, around the way this is described here, it absolutely is hard money for capital investments, including, as Jonathan, I mean, on the table for community discussion, facilities improvements in our Jefferson feeder schools.
Also, and just say, a Center for Black Excellence absolutely needs to be visioned and created from the black community. And so I think extra attention to engagement is critical to the success. And including the people that are most impacted by any project such as this, the best practices inform us that we should have them be part of the conversation rather than doing something for the community. And, and these things cost money and time. And I think that that's, that number represents both of those things, money and time.
Yeah.
Well, so let me be clear in where I'm coming from. And seeing $60 million, again, how this read, and this is the first time I've seen it, with no product, caused me some heartburn. So it's good to hear that there's some product in there. I'm all for a really grounded visionary community process, but $60 million is a lot to pay for that. $60 million is 2K5s are pretty close to that, or at least a really good middle school. So I, I want to see more definition of what that's included, a better, maybe a better definition.
Yeah, just to your point, maybe Dan could provide, just to give us a ballpark. Because I think Kellogg and the multiple pathways to graduation buildings are about $60 million. So, and I think this is an excellent point to have a discussion about now so that we actually capture what we could be getting for $60 million. And Dan, am I roughly correct that that's the cost of both Kellogg separately and the MPG buildings?
Yeah, you're very good. They're both very near $60 million.
Which is how many square feet approximately, both?
Kellogg is about 100,000 square feet. I'm going to not recall multiple pathways offhand, but somewhere in the ballpark.
And both of those included planning processes, maybe not as thorough of what we're, as we're talking about with this center. But I, I want us to have good process and I want us to focus on results, which is, you know, actual buildings.
Well, right, so as we think about the fact that, you know, in our conversations, my conversations with Dan, Director Bailey, you know, it's clear that some of the planning for some of the general programs is anywhere in the ballpark. Uh Director Bailey, uh you know, it's it's clear that some of the planning for some of the general programs is anywhere in the ballpark of. You know, uh eight million to 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 nine million. Correct me if I'm wrong, uh again, that includes some of the planning and. Uh conceptual development, right? And so that's just for one single site. So again, as we think about uh. Some of the ideas that have been generated around the Center for Black Student Excellence, uh you know, it is important to think about this uh. You know, looking at multiple sites. Uh and so as we as as we initiated some initial strap. Uh to Director Scott's point, you know, uh we can't, you know, it this is the fine balance of wanting to provide something that is. You know, tangible, uh but also that, you know, we allow our community uh to shape what that looks like in the future, right? So so this money is meant to be to provide that opportunity for us as a school district to do this differently than we have typically done it.
We have invested in master planning before. It's not dissimilar to the process that we've had for our high schools. And that's why we are where we are with Jefferson today. We have um a cost estimate. We have a community-led process that has. You know, gotten us to the point of what what Jefferson itself might look like. So um a master planning process for these other elements um could could look a little similar.
So I also just wanna remind us all that um, you know, people are out demonstrating every night because.
Carrying on business as usual has not worked for many communities. And so I know in my day job, we're being very intentional about. Um not going with our first, our gut instincts, because that's that that represents business as usual. And this, um I'm calling it a bubbling of a of a dollar figure allows us the time to envision alongside and collectively with the community. Um and get their buy-in and 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 co-create this, you know, the Center for Black Excellence Excellence. I'm happy to know that we're being um we're being very intentional about um the approach to this project rather than. Um rather than conducting it business as usual.
So one thing I'm curious about when I'm looking at option three, which is um has been and is my uh preferred option. Is the question around security versus ADA and ADA accessibility? And I think I'm gonna ask the question that I've asked a number of times over the years about um ADA accessibility and. Does the uh since our our broader community based on the polling, and that's just one snapshot. Um scored security lower um than almost every other thing in the package. Um and ADA accessibility was ranked relatively high. Curious, does eleven million get us to um one of this, a standard that we had asked? Um have have discussed over the years, which is like every cluster has a fully accessible. Um elementary school, middle school and high schools so that um students um with diverse needs can attend their. A a school, if not their neighborhood school, a school in their um high school cluster. Does that amount, that eleven million, get us get us to that?
Yeah, good question. Um I I will start by saying that we are in the process right now of. Based upon the feedback that we received recently from the BAC and from others, and also going through and sharpening our pencil and some other requests for estimates. Uh we're going to be sending out early next week an update to all the numbers. There there won't be major shifts, but there will be some shifts in the numbers. And some will go up and and some will go down. I just wanted to preface with that. Uh on the ADA number there. Uh the, when we presented the ADA options, we gave three options. I'm pretty sure this is right. Uh the eleven million was the lowest number and what that did was provide. Uh was an estimate for one fully accessible K-five middle school and high school per cluster. Uh there was a second option that had multiple configurations uh in each cluster. And then I believe the largest was second floor accessible, I mean, first floor accessible, sorry, throughout the district. Um I'll resend out the document that's got more of those details that's going a little bit off of memory. But in short, yes, that is that is the one configuration per cluster.
Dan, I know our um bond accountability committee really took a deep dive with all of this last week. So can you tell us um specifically what other areas you guys are um reestimating? I know we're looking at um the costs, the projected costs for Jefferson and back to what those costs might be. If it was a new building, for example, or what were some of the other um ideas that came up through the BAC?
Yeah, some of the ones we're looking at is as we've reached out to our cost estimator to get a conceptual number for uh that Jefferson model that you just mentioned. Uh we've also talked to three cost estimators to look at uh construction cost escalation, what that forecast is. Update our forecast or see if we need to update our forecast for that. And that's something that trickles through most all of these scopes of work. Because we're we're looking to use a a uniform uh uh cost estimate or forecasting estimate. Uh the staffing plan is another one. We've used a generic five percent because we've looked at lots of different options. So having a percentage was uh easy to do because staffing obviously depends on what that scope of work is. We're looking more specifically at the staffing. Uh and it's going to be, you know, slightly somewhere in that five to six percent. That's what we've been running pretty regularly, but to get a more precise number uh on that. Uh and and internally staff, we've been going over these scopes of work as well for the last several weeks. And there's a couple of areas where, you know, we're sharpening our pencil. We've we've found a little bit of uh duplicating some work. And so we've we've sharpened up our.
All right, let's hope that those just all come out on the right side.
Yeah, they're all down. That's all we're, we'd love that.
So just, I guess I would flag, I'd be curious about um. And this is, I think, a relatively minor in a one point one billion dollar um potential package. Shifting money, some money from security to ADA accessibility depending on what. So it sounds like um Dan, that the eleven million gets you the one, the one K-five, one middle school and one high school. High school cluster. Um and I guess I'd just be interested that what's what's the next increment? Um you know, just so we we can continue our forward motion um to make our district as accessible as possible.
Yeah, I think that's absolutely a fair comment and something that we should look at. Um I would also um note that we're uh one of the others. Uh factors here, cost factors, is the program contingency. And so we're looking to hold the the ten percent contingency. Uh in all of the models that we've had that. Uh and if uh if this is a four-year bond, for example, if we're a couple of years into that. And we're not looking to need that contingency for a specific purpose, uh that would be a good time to make uh for the board to go through some decision-making. About how they might allocate those funds to other scopes of work. Uh but just looking from the base of increasing that ADA cost. Uh scope is a good idea.
But but Dan, that security number actually reflects um being able to do the scope of work. That we've identified as needed in all of our buildings, right? It's not an incremental approach.
The, correct. The security scope that's in that number includes classroom door locks throughout the district. Uh it's in updates to our security uh system throughout the district where that's needed. Uh and adding cameras throughout the.
I guess my only comment would be um, I mean, they're all worthy investments. Is we just have a long way to go on accessibility and um. My my preference would be to try and make more progress if we could and um. While some of the security pieces are, it's like the locks, having changing the locks or having classroom locks on all the doors. Is something that's district-wide, others are incremental and we're making trade-offs all over the, you know, all over the place with um our facility needs. So like I say, I I don't view it as a big line item, but if we can continue to really make progress, I know this has been. Uh it's a pretty substantial issue for lots of parent, lots of parents and and students of not having. Um access to neighborhood schools or even neighborhoods, even a school in their cluster, high school cluster.
Yeah, absolutely. Something worth uh worth looking at in more detail.
So um and not to disagree with your point, I think looking at at some kind of shift there. Uh would be good to look at. Uh I just wanna say with uh school being closed. School shootings have not been in the headlines. As soon as they are, I think the whole results on security would change. Um because, you know, that's the kind of culture we live in is what's right in front of us is what's important. So I just just wanna put that out as kind of a caution or something to think about um when it comes to the security piece.
I think another thing to note too is that the investments in our special education classrooms, um many of those are. Accessibility and, you know, facilities changes.
Yep, that's.
They're just, I earmarked specifically for our um special education-focused classrooms.
Right. My other question is, we are potentially looking at uh converting another middle school. Uh in the short term, are there any funds in this package? That would make the necessary uh changes, building changes. Um would those be funded anywhere in this package?
This option as presented uh does not include that. The the categories of work that we've been using in the different models include a capacity and enrollment category. Where some of the options have had funds there uh in the past. That to date from the enrollment review and capacity review that has been going on. Uh there hasn't been any specific capital need or capital project identified. That said, we are aware that we're go- we're reviewing enrollment. Um and there could be some capital needs in the near future, in the next year or in the next couple of years. Those just have not been identified yet. So setting some uh some funds aside to support those needs when identified. Um might be uh.
Yeah, so we know, we know from Roseway Heights, um I believe, well, Tubman certainly and and Oakley. We we have an idea of the rough amount of what those funds might be. Um again, this isn't a certainty. We haven't, we haven't decided that yet, but it's certainly a strong possibility. Um and those, when that ha- if if that happens, the money has to come from somewhere.
And and I think to put a fine point on it, I mean, the board has been fairly clear in saying that we want um Harrison Park to be considered. In in the same process as the enrollment um balancing conversation for Kellogg since they're adjacent. And I think there's generally been consensus that Harrison Park would be the next um middle school conversion. That we haven't voted on it. So it is just a question of whether that um those improvements would be absorbed by the general fund.
Yeah, thank you, Director Constan, for sort of raising it in that framework, because I believe within the next year. Um as we move to designate the boundaries of Kellogg. The very real question of what about the other under-enrolled K-eights in outer southeast, the last concentration of them in the district. Um will will be definitely an issue that comes up. And I think we all don't wanna be in the position of how come we didn't allocate any money for that when we knew that that needed to happen? So I really appreciate um that Director Bailey raised it and the supporting comments for direct from Director Constan. Because we know it's gonna be needed, so we should plan for it. Um and I say, I think it it's been a long time coming. They're gonna be the last ones. And we don't wanna say we can't do it because we didn't plan for it, even though we've discussed it repeatedly.
Can I ask a uh this is Rita, um can I ask a question about the um? The um, all right, put this, uh how solid are these cost estimates? Um do we have any indication yet um what kind of impact we may be seeing in the short term or the medium term? Um around um cost escalation?
Yeah, that's a great question. Uh these are all definitely estimates and something that we know about estimates is they're going to be wrong one way or the other. Uh the way that we look to uh manage that is, you know, we've got some different risk management strategies. Uh contingencies that are built within projects and scopes of work and also program contingencies are a a couple of those. We have, we've always carried uh cost escalation in our projects as well. Uh we had been carrying assuming for these projects, the five percent for the first year and four percent for the remaining years. Uh we're getting some updated information or we've got some updated information now that we're all, we're putting together what a revised recommendation would look like. Uh there's clearly no consensus. Some of our estimators anticipate that the rates will increase in coming years. Others anticipate it will decrease in coming years from from what it is now. Um that said, from what what we've seen come in so far, it isn't, no one's anticipating anything dramatically different. Than what we had been anticipating even six months ago, but it is a big variable. Um people don't know what it's gonna look like three, six or a month from now or, you know, a couple of years from now. And that's an argument for having a relatively healthy program contingency. That can, that can help augment those unforeseen conditions.
I I think, Dan, the the BAC had a really deep conversation about this. And I think it's fair to say that the program contingencies and the project contingencies that we see here. Are are very conservative. Is that fair to say?
Yeah, I think they're conservative. Our our projects um are pretty uniform. Uh for new construction, we usually have ten percent. Uh and for renovation, we hold fifteen percent. And that's, that's just a project contingency. A ten percent program contingency is 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 pretty healthy. It's it's certainly more than what we've had in the past. Uh we've seen significant scope increases after the two thousand twelve bond pass and the two thousand seventeen bond pass. So I I certainly think it's appropriate to have a healthy program contingency, even though it's a big dollar amount when you see it, percentage-wise, it's not.
No question. And then with the other, with the categories for the health and safety projects, um it, to the extent that. You know, there's more left over, it just means you can hit more school sites.
Absolutely. When it comes to bonds, it's zero-sum game. So if you, if you estimate too conservatively, that means that you have more funds for projects. Versus the other way, then you're eliminating projects or eliminating scope. And the only other point I'd make is, we haven't talked a lot of details about bond language, but when we do, and we'll do that here this month. Uh it'll be important to have flexibility in there. Again, these are estimates. Uh so many of our scopes are are ranges that we're looking to hit. Uh when you look at our roofs and we look at our mechanical systems. And having the flexibility to respond to the needs as we learn more uh as the the program goes forward, I think will be important.
So can I go back to um? If I heard you right, that your your estimates for cost escalation of five percent in the first year and four percent in years thereafter, right?
That's what we have been using for these numbers and what, we've got some updated information, so we might see some, a small change to that. That we would, when we put out the new information.
Because wasn't four percent annual cost escalation the assumption that was embedded in the estimates for the twenty seventeen projects? And that proved to be overly optimistic?
The the twenty seventeen, I don't think was that clear. I don't think used a consistent number. Um and then the other component to escalation is it's rate by number of years. Uh and so it it just wasn't as clear and transparent of how uh of how that worked. But we're really trying to, these are estimates, we know that the numbers are going to be wrong. What we really wanna convey is. Here are the assumptions that are going into these numbers and here's why we think they are reasonable now. In the future, if we're wrong, um and and, you know, of course, you can be wrong. Um we wanna be able to look back and say, well, this is what we assumed. We want to be able to look back and say, well, this is what we assumed. And at that time it was reasonable and we were very transparent and clear about it.
So I, I think it's, you know, we should plan conservatively and, um, you know, kind of keep, well, it's in a weird way. Um, I mean, what we're hearing now in construction is that there's still things in the projects in the pipeline, but not for long. So, uh, in, in a weird way to, i- if, if that benefits us in terms of costs going forward in the next couple of years, that, that's a great thing, even though it means that the economy is not doing well. It's not such a good, good thing. So if this works out that we can get more benefit, uh, for our bond dollars, that's a silver lining.
Right. I, I just think as a general rule, we should be pessimistic in these kinds of estimates rather than, um, hoping, you know, hope for the best, prepare for the worst.
Well, I think, um, we also have the benefit, not just of our external estimators that Dan was referring to, but of the expertise of the bond accountability committee, who is really, um, really scrutinizing the assumptions in the estimates.
The last thing I will ask for, and I have asked for this before, but I'm going to keep asking for it, is that currently our enrollment projections uh, for high school students or the, at least through 2034, I think is the most recent one we have, and we'll have another one in the coming months, are for overall flat enrollment. Um, we know we've had a 10% decline in kindergarten enrollment over the last five or six years. We know we have record low fertility rates. We know on balance, we have more families with kids moving out of the district than moving in. Jefferson currently has 1,000 plus students. If we build it Jefferson to 1,700 capacity, how does that work district wide in terms of what's that work ethic do? And I'm very glad that Director DePass has asked the city to, um, help us, um, as, you, you, the city has plans to expand housing that it depends upon, in, in terms of child friendly housing, it depends upon how many of those units are subsidized and multi-bedroom. Otherwise we'll get, we'll see what's happened in other cities where we've had a lot of housing capacity added, but it's not added to the population of students. So, um, I would, we, we need that analysis going forward.
Director Bailey, I just again, um, requested that today and right after I requested that, recognized that a report came across, uh, through email. That's from the Center for Population Studies, I believe, at Portland State. I have not read it. I have it on one of my open tabs on my computer, one of my 50 tabs that's open. I close it because I don't forget it. Um, and I've said it before, but the reason, um, Jefferson's low enrollment reflects a lack of investment for decades and decades in, in that community. Addresses, including mine, have an option to send your kids anywhere but there and and so people do, people that have moved in and gentrified this area have chosen to send their kids in other place, uh, to other schools.
I'm taking a systems point of view, uh, and I know you're a system thinker. So I'm, that's, that's what I'm asking for is houses can impact your system.
Sure. And we have both publicly subsidized housing going in at a great quite, quite readily in the interstate urban renewal area specifically. And we also have private, um, residential building happening due to the residential infill project recently passed in the last week, I believe, um, through city council. So we have a, we have a lot of investment in the interstate urban renewal area and the Jefferson catchment area, which is a doubling of densities on, 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 on urban lots and quite a bit of family sized subsidized housing in that corridor. I'll get the numbers for you again. I just, um, I just requested that, but we also have a report in our inbox that talks, um, it's, it's specifically around school enrollment data that I think might be instructive. Also, I guess I'm under the impression that we need to build for a hundred years and we know in a hundred years, our city is going to look quite differently. It might look like Manhattan at some point. Over time.
Yeah. So, so I get that hundred years, but I'm also building for the next 20 years. And if it makes, uh, makes sense that we can do more with our dollars in the short term in the Jefferson cluster, then that provides an immediate benefit rather than a hundred, hundred year out benefit or a 50 year out benefit. That's all, that's all I'm, I'm saying. I'm trying to make the, the biggest impact of our dollars in that cluster.
And, and I'm saying that this is now the time to invest in, in, in our black children. We can't, we can't say that we only have a few in a building as a reason to not invest in that community.
I also believe.
That's also what I'm, that's what I'm saying too. And I don't know deeper.
To be supportive of the, the vision moving forward is the beauty of the investment in the Center for Black Student Excellence is a, a cluster and a community wide, um, investment and that, to Michelle's, to Director DePass's point about the lack of investment and the option for, um, neighborhood families to choose a different school unlike anywhere else. But then also if we make investments in the K through eight, uh, portion of the, of the cluster and in, in the neighborhood and the community that, that long-term, I think has a, a benefit to ultimately to Jefferson High School and the students. We can't just build, um, a brand new, modern Jefferson and not also critically examine our enrollment policies. Um, what's happening in those middle, in the middle schools and then ultimately also in the, in the, the K five. So I, I think the beauty of this proposal is it will get after, um, this broad, a comprehend, it'll be a broader comprehensive approach. And I think should address some of the issues you're direct, you're raising, Director Bailey.
I want to use the time left to make sure that everybody, all of our board members surface questions and information requests that we may have, um, before the next time we get together. This is our preferred option before of us. We are going to get a little more, um, fine tuned information based on the, um, estimating processes that Dan Young referred to. So we might see some, some slight changes there, but, um, please raise any issues you have about, um, what you see, what you don't see, what you need to know to be supportive. Questions you've raised before that remain unanswered.
Can I make just, uh, um, a request and, and I feel a little guilty making this request, but, um, I, I've been trying to lay my hands on some of the previous, uh, data that we got, some of, some of the previous scenarios that we received over the last few months. And, and I can't lay my hands on them right away. Um, so I guess my request is it would be helpful, at least for me, to see kind of the evolution of these numbers over time. And it, so for example, you know, on the curriculum is, is the 29.2 million in this package for curriculum, was that the high number, the low number, the medium number in previous iterations, you know, and, you know, the same for the ADA accessibility and so it would just be helpful to be able to see these things kind of all at once. And, if I had a better record keeping system, I could pull them up instantly, but.
Director Moore, um, the, all the numbers on this version you're looking at are the high numbers. And the lower iterations or the different iterations are on the bond renewal website. They're right there. If you want me to send you the link, I can do that just so it's easily accessible.
Well, I, I.
I think you guys are getting a lot of paper, so.
I, I pulled up, I pulled up the website and I'm not seeing it right away, but okay, that's helpful. If these are all the, the high numbers, because that's, I want to see all the high numbers.
Dan said the ADA accessibility was the low number.
It, it seems like the, uh, for example, the original estimate we have technology as a wish list was closer to 200 million, I thought.
I have.
That got pared down. Um, and for example, and I, and I know the roofs and mechanical also got pared down over time, I believe. Dan, could you, uh, correct me if I'm wrong?
Yeah, sure. Um, uh, that, that's correct. When we were looking back when, uh, an eight-year bond option, there were more options in there. So I have a document that I can share after this meeting with the board. And what it does is it has links to, it has labeled links to previous documents that were shared at either previous port meetings, board work sessions, or the bond subcommittee. And you can walk through the different holistic options that were shown when we were looking at eight-year options or even the smaller, uh, residency bond options. And also you can see the iterations of the educational facility improvements, uh, getting back since I think February or March.
And we, we'd sort of have to do a translation of one year versus eight year.
Right. So I, so one of the, I, I think I remember the email you were talking about, Dan, um, which was a very good email. And, and I do think, yeah, we need to keep in mind when we look at those numbers, um, for example, the roofs, we only have a certain capacity to do X number of roofs per year. So it was a much bigger number when we were contemplating an eight-year bond than a four-year bond. So anyway, it, thank you. That would be helpful. Um, just to, just to kind of solidify where we landed.
Yeah, no problem. Let me add a couple more, uh, of the, this updated information and I'll, and I'll get it out to everyone.
Thank you.
Also Superintendent, um, I know that there has continued to be discussion around the technology proposals and curriculum proposals. Do you want to speak to that? And, um, what's represented by these notes here and how it aligns with your, your vision for what our kids need?
Thank you, Chair. I was holding on to my talking chip very patiently and I wanted to use it at just the right moment. So, if I can rewind for just a moment to say, um, I think it's laudable and it shows, um, a rather respectable vote of confidence from giving the poll around how the community is feeling about us investing in our, in our students. So I'm very thankful that, that folks are, are feeling that way and, and growing in their confidence. I was, and I have to speak as sort of the alleged instructional leader for PPS. I couldn't help but observe that whether it was the campaign poll or whether it was the survey to staff and families or our town hall results, all of them rated at the top or near the top, uh, curriculum. And so, which goes to our core mission and maybe I sound like a broken record, but I've been bringing it up early on about the importance of leveraging this opportunity to make up for the curriculum debt that perhaps leapfrog ourselves. And to making sure that our students everywhere have access to high quality materials. We have our CTO and our CAO here in this virtual meeting who, who can detail or, or remind us, you know, what were some of the key elements here, but let me speak about Dr. Luis Valentino because I've known him for, I think over 10 years. And he's always been a modest individual and I think he was a little anemic in his ask, to be honest. He, 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 his ask was to support the district, uh, complying with having a base curriculum across content areas to get us back on an adoption cycle. And, and that would be a good thing, that would be a good place to be. But I would argue that we should be a bit more ambitious than that and that the board should consider increasing, increasing that by a couple of notches perhaps, because what we really want to be is more state of the art, uh, in, in some of the leading edge emerging work. Things that really accompany nicely, um, many of the other elements of this bond package. I can rattle off a few, but, um, what would it look like if every high school was supported to offer African-American studies courses? What would it look like to implement our climate change and justice curriculum, not just in the high school level or across all grade levels in a developmentally appropriate way? Just a couple of examples, but I won't take away any of his thought process, but Dr. Valentino, would, would you mind sharing, what could you do with a little more?
Hi, thank you. Good evening, um, Board President, Superintendent, uh, Board members. Well, first I want to thank the people of Portland for their support because given, given the, the context of where we are right now, to be, to, to, to know that we are supported in this way is, is really heartwarming. One of the things that, um, I've always felt that it's not the what you purchase, but who is at the work. And I've been very fortunate here in Portland to have an amazing group of senior directors and leaders and, and partners to work with. Uh, and so we, I relied a lot on sweat equity, to be honest with you, because we're always looking for the least expensive that then requires us to make adjustments to tweak, to, to, so to fix, right? To, to make it u- usable form for us, uh, in PPS and primarily because we don't want to, be wasteful, uh, in the resources that we do get. So we do, we do count our pennies very well. And, and, and so the, the request was really to, as the superintendent indicated, to, to do a couple of things. One, to continue to establish a foundation that has been missing in the system for a very, very long time. And two, to put us back on the cycle of adoption that allows for us not to be thinking about the program year over year, but that we are consistent in how we adopt our curriculum as it gets improved upon. And, uh, we develop greater capacity to implement. By having additional resources, one of the things that it will do, it will allow us to be more, uh, innovative in a lot of the work that we're actually doing as well. Because we're, we've been focusing, for example, as the superintendent indicated, climate justice at one level. But it would be amazing if we could actually create a PK 12 continuum around climate justice, a PK 12 continuum around ethnic studies. But the, the problem with that is not only is it a heavy lift to put that in place, but also in its implementation, it does require professional development. It does require resources, right? And we're in the middle of a crisis that is also asking us to revisit and look at the curriculum we do have. So if we're going to talk about ethnic studies, we really don't have the resources, the materials that are necessary to implement a quality ethnic studies program. And so the ask was simply to look at the high school, but it would be incredible if we had additional resources to expand that. So, you know, we, we've, we've targeted where we're going to move our agenda. And what the resources, additional resources would do, it would allow us to be more innovative, to think more broadly and not to limit the thinking around, well, we can't move any further than this because these are the resources that, that we do have. So if the consideration is there, I would be very grateful and very happy if additional resources were made available. Thank you for the opportunity to share that.
A recommendation of a modification that you would like to put on the table?
I, I can suggest several. Um, I'll make one. Uh, and, and if there's anything that planning for this re-entry is teaching us is, how much we should not be cheap about making sure the right content and digital resources and technology backbone is in place. And so, uh, if, if, if we were to, uh, raise a notch the curricular investment, uh, and I don't want to put our CTO. Uh, and I don't want to put our CTO here on the spot, whether we would be willing to trim a little bit from there. Knowing that much of the work, uh, that we're envisioning in evolving into a digital district. Um, um, we, 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 we would have to sequence over time anyways. Um, so, and I know it's not his entire original ask either, um, but perhaps, uh, some of that future work could come. Uh, in the future, uh, bond referrals as well. So, um, I'm just concerned about, uh, the instructional, uh, material need now. Which I'll remind the board is the only compliance area that PPS, uh, is not meeting with Division 22 in our annual ODE report. We've made great progress, uh, in the last couple of years, satisfying all the areas of deficiency. And I don't want to steal our deputy's thunder, uh, from an upcoming meeting, but, um, I'm feeling that urgency.
So the, the one thing, uh. It seems like it would be worthwhile as we look at some of the things that aren't in here. That we, um, think about, uh, maybe doesn't have to happen before the referral, but you know, how if we do have. Um, you know, money from contingencies, you know, how, or the money from the construction excise tax. How we go about allocating that. Um, because there's going to, there's going to be some very worthy, um. Needs and trade offs of everything that doesn't get into this. And so having some sort of prioritized lists. Um, and a list that's somewhat sequenced by time, um, because there may be some things that. Um, it may be a, a high priority, but it's like three years down the road and. We can sequence in a, in a different way. So it seems like, um, cataloguing some of these things. Um, whether or not we make that change in the, the underlying package, but if even if we don't, this and some other things that were raised tonight of how we. Um, might continue to make progress, um, as we, as we can. So, uh, Chair Konstant, I have a, I have a general question of, um, and I don't know if this is for Deputy Superintendent Hertz. Um, about the actual language in the package. Um, and when I look at this list, uh, I can't do the math really quick, but you have, um, say 198 in health and safety. 179 in education improvements and then. Um, the modernization. And I know last time in the, the 2017 bond, when most, most of us weren't part of that, but there was a, um. A very clear, um, language in the, um, in the referral and what voters approved that at least. 150 million be spent on health and safety projects. And, um, that did protect a corpus of money for particular things. And I'm wondering in this particular. Um, referral, like the specificity by which we would. Sort of bucket up major, um. Subsets of projects so that. Um, we don't end up with some sort of cost overrun in some area then. Resulting in something that we told voters were going to happen, doesn't happen. So. When would you see the referral language?
Yeah. And, and actually before staff jump in, because I think, um, uh, Director Bremeter, you're raising a really important point. Um, but one I think that is, is, is really sort of a, a, a board conversation about what that language should look like. And. This came up at a committee meeting. It was either committee meeting or a work session on this. And I, I, I really, uh, would strongly advocate for, um, relatively flexible language. I think we need to be really clear and transparent with voters about what the plan is. And I think we need to be really clear and transparent with voters about how we're spending the money. But artificially, um, cop, uh, uh, including constraints, legal constraints in, in any sort of ballot language. That a, a year, two years, three years from now, um, might prove to be unwieldy, I think would, would be a mistake and hamstring the district. So. Um, I think it's a great question. I, I would love to actually hear from other board members as well. Um, for me, in 1.1 million dollar bond, we've got a plan. Um, and, and I think it's a really good plan. Um, and I think, and I think that's what we need to be transparent about. And, and as that plan or if that plan evolves or changes, we need to be really clear with voters how it has. Um, but again, staying within, you know, um, these larger categories is would be my preference.
Yeah. And that's.
Can I, can I ask?
Discussion how it happens, because I, I think this was an issue. Last time of, you know, the Benson community feeling, you know, they were promised something, the health and safety, like the campaign said something about health and safety and. Again, not wanting to be, I, I think the only, um, line that was very clearly drawn was around. Health and safety generally. So it was just one light item. And so I think, I think it's just worth a discussion and then also to be very deliberate during the, the campaign. So the campaign's not saying something else that we ultimately. Um, don't deliver on.
Can I weigh in on that? Um, I, I, I think the environment in 2017 was very different. And, um, one of the things that, uh, I, I think came through loud and clear in the poll and the survey. And the discussions, um, was that, uh, there was a, a very broad support for kind of the full meal deal. Um, that, uh, m- most of the components that have, that were specified. Um, got, uh, very high support and. And, and very close support. I mean, it was, it was pretty even across the board, a couple of outliers, but. Um, but generally speaking, I think the message was that all of these things are worthy. So I. M- m- my recollection of the 2017, um, polling. Um, that was happening in the middle of the lead in the water crisis. So it was a very different environment and there was a, a very clear. Um, uh, fe- felt need for, um, health and safety. Um, investments taking priority. Um, I, I, I don't think we're in the same situation now. Um, and I think what we've done in the, with past bonds is to, to make sure that we've built in enough flexibility so that. You know, everything has been couched in up to. You know, we're going to do up to X number of roofs and that sort of thing. Um, and, and I tend to agree with, um, Andrew. That, um, we want to be careful in, um. I, I think specificity is good, um, but too much specificity can actually be, um, problematic. Over, you know, a f- four to six year building projects.
Agreed.
Yeah, I, I agree as well. Um, Andrew, sorry, um. I agree with, with what's been said already that, um, it's important to promise, uh, to deliver on what the voters vote for. And, um, it's important to have some flexibility. So we don't, um, aren't hamstrung by exact language.
So just. Can I look in here? Um, I, I'd like to go back to what Superintendent Guerrero was talking about with the, um, educational investments. Um. S- so, uh. Superintendent Guerrero, you mentioned both curriculum and technology as, um, potentially, uh, bringing forth some new, um. New asks, new estimates about what could usefully be invested in those categories. Um, and, and I just wanted to. I, I just wanted to say that, um. I, I don't think now is the time to, uh, to be, to penny pinch. Um, I, I want, w- we need to be good stewards of taxpayer funds, but I think the message that we've gotten. Um, over the last few months is that, um, we're in a world historical moment right now. And what everybody wants is for PPS to do what it needs to do in order to provide the best possible educational experiences. For our students and in particular, our students of color. Um, and they are willing to go for a very big number. Um, during an economic crisis. On the strength of, um, some degree of faith in PPS that will, will do right by kids and will use the money wisely. And, um, I would, I would suggest that, um. You come up with some numbers that reflect your best, y- y- you know, your professional. Um, estimate about what you need in order to provide that kind of educational experience for students. Um, because I don't want us to, you know, if we're going to do this, let's do this, let's do it right. Um, so now is the moment and it's going to be much more difficult. A year from now to say, you know, you know, we really could use another, I don't know, $5 million for X. And have everybody turn around and say, but didn't we just give you a whole pile of money for precisely that last year? So I would like to hear about those needs and desires sooner rather than later. Be- before we refer, I'd, I'd like to see what those numbers are because, um, I want to do this right.
Thank you, Director Moore. I, I appreciate that. Um, um, and, and it's the, it's the same line of thinking. Um, that's going through my head as well. Um, I, we've been listening very carefully to the youth stand up and say. There are some areas where we want to see education reimagined in PPS. Uh, community has been showing up saying. This is the kind of schooling experience we want our students of color to have. Uh, and we do have an opportunity here and we do want to be prudent stewards of public resources. But I can't think of a better investment. And so absolutely, we should have safe and modern buildings and every child deserves to be. In an open, multi-tool learning environment, but what happens inside matters also. And so, um, having a base curriculum is. Is foundational and necessary. And we've, we've had many late night conversations on Tuesdays about. How can we be the national leader in a number of areas? And so we've made great strides in CTE, we've made great strides in arts education. And, and then there's a number of other areas where Portland has gotten some recognition for the advocacy. On behalf of our students, for example, and I would really love to be able to deliver on that, uh, in a big way. And so. Um, we owe the board a little bit more detailed estimate than maybe you've seen and. Um, I would want an opportunity to get our instructional team together. Um, I think perhaps there's some overlaps with. When you talk about technology and teaching and learning, obviously about how we support one another. Um, and there may be a few other areas where maybe we can, we, we might be able to shave a little bit of resource to, to make a few more initiatives. Uh, be well implemented. Uh, and maybe we preserve our general fund monies into the professional learning. And then professional capacity building that would move to come with bond resourced materials. So, um. I'll appreciate the chance to be able to, to do that with the team, um, pronto.
Yeah, I think this is, uh. A chance to stretch toward our vision. Uh, where we bring together, you know, I, I think Superintendent Guerrero, under your leadership and under your team. We've done a really good job in making progress of, and it's still a work in progress of, uh. One, having a vision and building a foundation towards that vision. Um, and breaking down silos, we've still got more. And I think this. I mean, a, a Center for Black Student Excellence brings together facilities and what's putting in the classroom. Uh, in alignment. So as we think about planning the facilities. In some ways, I, I feel like our high schools are still in the, a very sophisticated. But still not quite visionary design. You know, we've opened them up to have more flexible learning spaces and so on. But I, I'm not sure that's matching yet our vision of what we want education to look like, uh, in this city. Uh, we had glimpses of that during the visioning process and certainly, um. Our, our facilitators of that process threw in some really futuristic. Um, scenarios for us to contemplate. And I think we're still lagging behind that and comfortable in. Um, well, this is a, a bright new shiny building, but it's kind of still the same kind of buildings that we've had. Um, s- so I think this is a, a chance for us to really stretch.
Well, Director Bailey, I think the directors and the broader committee, um, the guiding commission, um, did a great job, um, developing our collective vision. I, I don't know that I would classify it as we're lagging. I would say we're right on track. Um. We're this fall kicking off the second and third themes of our multi-year strategic plan development, which focuses squarely on our students. And developing that continuum, great page now for the graduate portrait. And. We have a whole nother engagement cycle scheduled with our educators so that they have time to really think about. What does the educator essentials look like? So that we get to that experience that you're describing that we want our students to have. We really need our educators, our students to do those next two pieces. So we're looking forward to that. You'll recognize the facilitators who will be coming aboard. Uh, to help us with that work. And, you know, it's our goal that by the late fall, there's a very clear roadmap for the next number of years that will show. And demonstrate substantive progress towards that vision.
So let me clarify, that's not where I think we're lagging. It's, it's marrying that with building design. Um, that, to me is, is the, the piece that we haven't integrated yet. Um, I'm, I'm real happy with the progress that we're making around the strategic plan. Um.
Right. And maybe we can look at the ad specs and crosswalk into our vision at some point.
So I just have a.
Rather than later.
So I have a process point of, um, just question to ask. So, um, Superintendent Guerrero, I wasn't sure if. You're going to come back with just a reallocation. You're not going to come back with a larger overall number.
No, ma'am. Um.
That, that's a question. I just, I wasn't.
That was a question, not an invitation.
Right. I just, I just want to clarify, um, because I guess. I, I would be interested to hear that, but I also think that, I mean, from, from my, I'll just, my perspective is I think this package, um. Does woefully little, uh, on the ADA progress. And I also, um, am really concerned about the lack of allocation. Of money for a school on outer se- uh, middle school in outer southeast. So if, if we, if there are additional resources, um, I, I don't think we should go over 1.1, just given the overall environment we're in. Um, but if, I, I think I'd be interested in having a, a conversation if there's dollars being alloc- reallocated in other areas of. How we might meet the other needs that we know also exist.
I, I think we were all listening intently to the earlier discussion on ADA. Uh, look, there's just something inherently inacquable about a child not being able to go to their neighborhood school because there was no ramp there. Uh, or that their parent in a wheelchair, grandma, who, uh, who uses, uh, who needs an accommodation also can't see their performance. So, uh, and yet we have a long road ahead of us in making sure all of our facilities are accessible in that way. So. Um, again, this is another iterative conversation tonight. Um, we heard where directors are, are, are focusing in on and. I'm, I'm sensing that overall that we're feeling, uh, positive about the overall package. And I think we're, we're fine tuning at this point. Uh, where, where we're really pushing ourselves to see if we're doing everything we can in, in, in a, in a bond referral that. Um, isn't exorbitant, that is reasonable, where our voters can feel like, uh, they're absolutely the right wise investments for, for us at this time. So. Um, we're, we're going to take another fine tooth bump to it. I think that was our commitment before this meeting.
Thank you, Superintendent, for that synopsis. I want to wrap things up, but, um, Nathaniel, I wanted to just ask you if you had some thoughts.
Uh, yeah, I do. Thank you. Uh, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Ah, great. Well, um, overall, I think that this, um, package is looking very good. I'm glad that we are, um, still considering the 320 for Jefferson. I think that is, um, critical.
I have one question about the health and safety allocations. There was some discussion about increasing ADA possibly from security. I was wondering if it might be worth also discussing increasing seismic? Maybe from, from the same source? I don't know. Because I mean, 15 million seems like an awfully small amount when we have such great need, right?
That's, that's a great question. And I think we do have some, Dan, as, as long as you're digging up old emails, we do have some background information about how we arrived at that number. What level of seismic work is also included in the roof work that we see in another category? Can we maybe, can someone get with Nathaniel in the next week to sort of walk through what that includes and how we arrived at, at that?
Yeah, absolutely. Happy to do that. I'll reach out to Nathaniel.
Great, thank you.
Good, Nathaniel?
So I
All right. Everyone's, everyone's disappearing from my screen, but I know you're not really disappearing. Any further thoughts for the good of the order? We've got some, some questions that we've put out to staff that we'll be working on in the next, in the next week or so. And then we reconvene at, we have another bond discussion at next week's board meeting as we get closer to refining things.
Yes, I, and this is something I've brought up before, and I know we probably don't have an answer to it yet, but we have a new, for lack of a better term, subway tile projection that we received. And by that, I mean, looking at the impact of this bond going forward. And if we come back in 2028, 24, for the next bond, which presumably would include the construction money for Cleveland and Wilson, among other things. And how much of that X space this bond will take, the next bond looks to be an estimate of 900 million over eight years, while this one is 1.1 over four years. And of course, that's, that spending doesn't exactly happen in that four-year time span. But what it looks like to me, and this is just my amateur glance, is that we're taking up a bit more of that space going forward. So that future bond or two would be smaller bonds over a longer period, at, at least the next one. And I'm concerned, and this relates to, in, in part to Nathaniel's question, the, the real need for seismic is to get, get all of our buildings up to that safety level three where we know everybody can walk out safely. And, and that's, that's rebuilding all of our schools. So I believe Deputy Superintendent Hertz has said, and I'm assuming this plan, this process is still in the works, is looking at that long-term of when we'll, when we get to that point where all our buildings will be up to that, that level. So I, I just want to remind my fellow directors that, you know, this is, what we do now has long-term, can have long-term consequences. I'm very interested in doing what we can to preserve that timeline going forward. So tonight's probably not the night to do that, but at our next meeting, I'd like to see some discussion of that.
All right. All right. Thank you, everyone. Good, good discussion. We will, we will revisit this topic at our board meeting next Tuesday, the 14th. With that, this work session of the Board of Education of Portland Public Schools is adjourned. Good night, everybody.